Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 17th. Could everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Can you please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform? Thank you. Please be seated. Could we have the roll call, please?
Counselor Baraka?
Here.
Counselor Flaherty?
Here.
Counselor Hume?
Here.
Counselor Maglio?
Here.
Counselor Moran?
Here.
Counselor Quilty?
Here.
Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Ringus is currently not here. Counselor Ryan?
Here. Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is announcements, and we're very pleased to be honoring a young man today. We're going to honor Thomas Kilifer, and he is a Boy Scout that recently saved his friend in distress while there was an accident in the swimming pool. So, we have some people here tonight that would like to say thank you and honor him. And I'm going to start off with Mayor Joyce, if she'd like to come up and say anything.
Good evening. So, this was brought to my attention, actually, because my son Gavin is in Thomas's Boy Scout troop with Troop 19. And I know I'm coming in, so I haven't had a chance to get a look at the audience yet, but we have several members from Troop 19 here, and probably maybe more appropriate to speak about the incident itself. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize, you know, I guess, the ability for scouts to learn literal lifesaving skills. You know, at summer camp, they take lifesaving swim lessons, and I think this is a really unique, you know, unique circumstance to recognize that this evening. And I do want to invite, who do we have here from Troop 19? You guys are so shy back there.
We have Assistant Scout Master Mike Geister. Geister.
Gersh.
Gersh, I wasn't even close. Come on up, Mike. Sorry about that. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
If you want to say-
Right up to the microphone.
Okay. Hey, everyone. Thank you for having us here. As you mentioned, yes, Thomas is seventh grade, and just earlier this month, using the skills he learned in scouting during his lifesaving merit badge, he was able to save his friend's life as he was swimming in the pool. He wasn't the strongest swimmer. So, it's scouting, it's one of those things that teaches you some very valuable life skills, not just for yourself, but for others. So, with that, I'd like to call Thomas Kilifer up to accept his award.
Thomas.
What did you think when you were, when did you take this, the lifesaving swim lesson merit badge? Was that recently?
Last year, when I did summer camp.
Did you ever think you would put it into use so soon?
No, not really.
I hope you're very proud of your actions. I'm certain that, I mean, we all are. We have a, we have a commendation signed by both myself and the entire town council. I don't know if any of the town councillors want to, want to say anything to Thomas?
Thank you. I'll open it up to the council. Any councillors? Counselor Flaherty?
Well, so the first thing that I want to say is, thank you so much for taking the, you know, for paying attention to what your friends were doing in the water. And, you know, lots of people take lifesaving courses. I have taken a lifesaving course. My skills have never been put to the test, but yours were. And not only did you, you know, pay attention during the lifesaving skills course that you took and earn that badge, but in the moment when those skills were needed, you stayed calm, you remembered those lessons, and you took appropriate action. And the results are, you know, forever. Because who knows what would have happened if you hadn't done that? So, like, that could happen to any of us at any time, and I'm so grateful for you and the other people who are out there kind of armed silently with this, you know, critical knowledge on what to do in case of an emergency. And so, I think it really speaks a lot to your maturity and bravery. So, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Yeah, I don't think anybody can quite say it is better than Counselor Flaherty, Thomas, but I'm incredibly impressed with your ability and skill, and I know it will serve you well in the years to come. So, thank you so much, and thank you for being willing to come here tonight and share your story, because it will probably inspire others to, to be brave when it's hard. So, great job.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thomas, everyone should have a friend like you. And as the previous speakers have already said, you know, bravery, bravery is, it's not a commodity that a lot of people have. So, obviously, the people around you, the people who have taught you, your scout masters, your peers on the, in the troop, they all help make you the guy that you are. And lead by example is a great way to be a great citizen. Thank you for showing us all that.
Counselor Hume?
Thomas, when I heard this story, alls I can say is wow. That's incredible. Most people, one, wouldn't recognize somebody was in trouble or drowning. Two, would panic themselves. So, the skills you learned at such a young age, and to be able to execute those skills and save a life is truly remarkable. So, congratulations to you. You are a great friend, a group, great troop mate. Keep those skills going, because I'm sure there's going to be, you're going to have a bright future and plenty of good deeds ahead. So, congratulations, well done. So proud of you.
Thank you. I just want to add, Thomas, it's, for the town council, being able to recognize your, what you did is wonderful. And we love to have the Boy Scouts come in here and recognize it's just a wonderful part of Braintree, the Boy Scouts and all they do for the town with their Eagle Scout projects, and then having you do this unrehearsed, just putting your skills to the test and being there for your friend when he needed you most. We just want to say congratulations and keep up the good work. Thank you.
I know typically after our congratulations from the council's perspective, we'll present the award and take a picture. But I also wanted to just recognize that Chief Cahoon from the Police Department is here, I think with a special certificate, so I'd love to offer him the opportunity to do that before we wrap this up. And also, Chief Viola is here, too. I think both wanted to come and recognize you, Thomas. So, just wanted you to know that your bravery and accomplishment is recognized not only by the council and myself, but also by our two chiefs of our public safety, the fire department-
Chiefs, come on up.
So, thanks for the opportunity, council, mayor. Chief Viola and I wanted to be part of this when we heard about what you did. And we're here on behalf of Braintree Public Safety to present to you a letter of commendation. On June 6, 2025, Scout First Class Thomas Kilifer of Troop 19 demonstrated exemplary courage and preparedness by rescuing a friend in distress. This act exemplifies the motto, "Be prepared," which is Troop 19's motto, and I think the council agrees with us on that. In public safety, we have a saying that people don't rise to the occasion, they sink to the level of training. And what happens because of the preparation of Troop 19 is you were there for your friend that day. And we honor that today, because that's what we try to instill in our offices every day in public safety. So, you should be very proud of yourself. Thirteen years old?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years old. Outstanding. You have a great head start. We're going to hand this to you, and the Chief Viola and I both have something to give you. Challenge coin, a couple of patches for you. Great job, great job. Congratulations. There's a challenge coin from the Police Department, and then there's the business card, and come by the police station, and we'll have a tour for you as well. Congratulations. I don't think you've done yet.
So, Thomas, we have a recognition for you as well. It's the mayor and the Braintree Town Council extend their congratulations to Thomas Kilifer in recognition of his lifesaving efforts that recently saved a friend in distress while swimming in a family pool. Boy Scout First Class Kilifer of Troop 19 threw the proper skills learned from the earning the swimming and lifesaving merit badges exemplifies the Boy Scout motto of be prepared. Congratulations, and thank you so much, Thomas. I think you might set the record for the rounds of applause, too. We haven't had that many rounds of applause. So, what we're going to do is we're going to come up and take pitches with everybody that wants to get in the picture, and then we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we're going to have to get back to our business. So, we're going to ask everybody if they can, after we do that, if they can maybe move our front. So, do we have a motion to take a five-minute recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-minute recess. Okay, we are back in session. So, we're still under announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? Counselor Maglio?
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. On Thursday night, the East Braintree Community Action Coalition has our regular monthly meeting, the third, it's the third Thursday. We're meeting at 6:30 at the Braintree Yacht Club. Lots of great things on the agenda. Hope everybody can come.
Thank you. Counselor Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan. This is our last meeting for the month of June, so a reminder to everyone, on Saturday, June 28th, is Braintree Day. Hope everyone will come out. It's always one of the most fun days of the year, so just wanted to put that plug in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements from councillors? Okay, we have approval of minutes for April 7, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now, we have old business, and the first item for old business is 25039, Mayor Intermunicipal Agreement, IMA, Public Health Excellence Grants for Shared Services or Take Up Any Action Related There, too. I'm going to refer to Counselor Baraka, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means for a recommendation for Order 25039.
Thank you, President Ryan. The committee met last night, and we are sending this to the council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the mayor's office that would like to speak on this matter? Mary Beth McGrath, the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, and to the members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening on this matter. You may recall, in November of 2003, the town council voted to approve the first intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence Shared Services Program. This is the second IMA of the second cycle. So, there's the ability to have three, three cycles, which are three years each, where this would be entering into the second one. The only thing that's changed from the original one is that the town, there are five communities that are part of the shared services program. That being the town of Randolph, which are the host agency, the town of Braintree, the town of Holbrook, the city of Quincy, and formerly the town of Waymouth. They have since withdrawn within the last week and a half or so from the program. So, it would just be the four communities that would be participating in this particular shared services round.
Thank you. Does any councillors have any questions, comments? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Director McGrath. So, just to reiterate, this is a two-year agreement, correct?
Three-year.
Three-year.
So, it will run 25 through 27.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, and those are on fiscal years?
Fiscal. I did confirm that today, fiscal years.
Great. So, we'll see this, we'll see this grant in place through June of '28 for the fiscal '27 year.
I have received notification from the host-
I'm sorry, stand corrected, '27.
Right, correct, yeah. That they have received a commitment from the state that it's funded through June 30 of 2027.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And thanks for your effort in putting this together again and keeping this going. It's, in the challenging times we have for revenues as all municipalities have, this is something that's very important. And this is specific around food, primarily a food inspection, restaurant inspection, is that it?
It's, it's for public health in general. We have had the opportunity to bring on a food inspector through the shared services program. That has been of great assistance to us in performing the, the regular and complaint-based food inspections that we're required to do.
Great. And you've, you've had some challenges in your department with having a, a full staff. This kind of an opportunity is really, it, it plays to our benefit, and thank you again for your effort in putting this together and working with the mayor's office to make this happen for the town of Braintree. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan, and thanks to Counselor Reynolds for recapping a lot of our conversation that we had last night at the committee meeting. I do think it's important for residents to know that this is a really nice way to augment our own fiscal budget with assistance from the state. It's a three-year grant. It's providing essential services for the town, and it's, and I'm grateful that you've reapplied for it, and hopefully, we can get the next, it was a, potentially, a nine-year-long stretch. So, we'll be hopeful for that to, to come forward. One quick follow-up from last night, are we secure in the full funding, even though Waymouth is no longer part of the agreement? Are we still getting the full value?
So, what the host agency, the town of Randolph, was able to gather from the State Health Department was that there is a commitment in place that the program is funded through June 30, June 30 of 2027.
At the full value, the 200, was it $270,000?
It would be $270,000 per year.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I know that was one of the questions we had from last night. But again, this is a, I'm fully supportive, a great way to help out our own staff and, and community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors, questions, comments on this matter before us? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I would move that authorizing Mayor Erin V. Joyce to execute an intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence Grant for Shared Services.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor McGrath. Next item on the agenda is 25031, Mayor Appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Angela Cavanaugh, as a regular voting member or take up any action related there, too. I'm going to refer to Counselor Baraka, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means for a recommendation on Order 25031.
Thank you, President Ryan. The Committee of Ways and Means met over two nights on the ZBA appointments. We met last night, and then again, this evening, prior to the meeting, for a full and thorough vetting. And for all the candidates, and I'm happy to repeat this as we go through, the committee is sending to the full council a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Joyce, good evening again.
Good evening, President Ryan. So, this evening, we have before you in the next several agenda items, appointments to our zoning board of appeals. For context, this is a five-member board that the mayor appoints and the council confirms. The board is comprised of three regular voting members and two associate members that would step in where there are conflict with one of the vote, one of the regular voting members. So, tonight, for the appointment of Angela Cavanaugh, that is to the regular voting member position. Angela is an architect and has been in the Braintree community for several years. She is here with her husband, and I would welcome her up to introduce herself and answer, answer any questions that the council might have. So, Angela, do you want to come on up?
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Excellent. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, so, my name's Angela Cavanaugh. I've lived in the town now for 20 years with my family. I'm a practicing architect. And in the past, I've been active in the community through different roles. I started the garden at the Flaherty Elementary School, and I was one of the people that helped start the farmer's market here in town. And I have a natural interest in buildings, being an architect, and our, the environment that we all live in. And I'm looking forward to hopefully serving in the community in a new role in the ZBA.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome, Ms. Cavanaugh. We've had the opportunity to discuss and question you and to get your insights. We've had two Ways and Means hearing. I felt that it was a very engaging experience. And the reason I, I bring that up is that we're kind of in an extraordinary situation. We've never really seated an entire board. However, we, as the council, in working with the mayor, have taken the time, performed due diligence, really, to understand your motivations, your skill sets, and your approach and understanding to what the ZBA role is in our community, and the members' role in the board itself. So, if you could just give us a quick little, what is your main interest for the purpose of the whole entire council to hear and the public? What was your main interest in taking this position? What was your main interest in taking this position?
Yeah, well, I've been around town for now 20 years, and I've seen a lot of good and bad things happen in terms of buildings in town, so of course I have an opinion. And, but no, I think the main thing is that I really think that Braintree is in a unique position right now with some of these new opportunities in terms of the MBTA Communities Act. I know that there's potential change coming because of that, and I really think that my role on the ZBA could make sure that we maintain the sense of community that we have now, even in the face of all that change, and, you know, making sure to uphold our zoning laws appropriately with such change, and just helping out the, you know, helping out residents, you know, even on small-scale things like, you know, adding on to homes and that type of thing.
Sure. Thank you. I, I'll, I'll, I'll yield back to the president on that to allow other members of the committee or the council to ask questions.
Thank you, Council Baraka.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you for being here, Ms. Kavanaugh, this evening. I think it might be helpful to provide some additional context. One of the things that we discussed at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, and I know I've gotten some questions from residents, is just how boards and commissions work in Braintree, and I know we have our town solicitor here as well this evening with any additional questions. But one of the things that we discussed in our meeting was that in our form of government, all the boards and commissions serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And the mayoral appointments to all of our boards and commissions, there's a great deference placed to the mayor in our town charter. In fact, you don't even need a full majority of councilors to approve mayoral appointments, so only four, four yeas are required for that. So I just thought that would be a helpful table setting for folks to know, and if you're interested in serving on our boards and commissions, please reach out to the mayor's office, because that's where the process begins. And I'd also like to, I want to acknowledge, especially having an architect be appointed. I know I've got a lot of inquiries from residents about design standards and architectural standards, and I am so appreciative of your professional background, Ms. Kavanaugh. I'm very confident that you're going to add a great perspective to the board, and I want to, again, thank you for your willingness to serve and serve the town. So that's it for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other councilors have any questions, comments? Council Maglio?
Thank you. So I, I just want to mention something. We, as a member of the Ways and Means, we spent a few hours last night, we spent a few hours tonight. I asked a lot of questions, and I do have something general that I'd like to say, not specific to each candidate, so I think I'm going to wait until the end.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's the only reason I'm not asking questions. I'm very excited and looking to support you.
Thank you. Any other councilors have any questions, comments? Council Warren?
I am in full support of Ms. Kavanaugh's appointment, and I want to make sure that the public is aware that there was exceptional amount of time given to the review of these applications to make sure that, that the people that were considering for appointment are qualified and interest, hold the best interests of the towns in, you know, that that's why they're interested in doing this, and that they're, you know, that they will be open-minded and serve to the best of their abilities. We asked a lot of questions, we listened a lot. I'll speak, you know, as Councilor Maglio said earlier, I'm going to speak later, but I'm fully in support of Ms. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Any other councilors, questions, comments? Okay, I just want to say a couple, ask one question. How about like the homeowners that want to do things in their home, want to make their home a better place for them and their family? Do you support that? Do you want to help the average homeowner in the town of Braintree?
Absolutely, yeah. I've recent, we recently, well, not that recently, we did a renovation on our house. We didn't seek a variance because we didn't need to, but I mean, I definitely know how invested people are in their homes, and, you know, it's, it's a big investment, and, you know, I applaud people that want to, you know, do work on their houses, and hopefully the ZBA will be able to, you know, grant them what they would like, and within reason.
Thank you. And I just want to say you have very big shoes to fill. The past board had members that were on it for a long time, and this is a very unique situation where we're appointing a new board, so you do have big shoes to fill. I wish you the best. You talked about your involvement with the town, the farmer's market. I know your husband's very involved with the town, and being on a board and helping the town of Braintree is a very honorable thing, in my opinion, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Council Flaherty?
So I, what I want to say first is thank you so much for taking the time to go through this process and for being willing to serve on this board. People who volunteer for the town of Braintree don't just fall off of trees, and you are particularly well-qualified for this position. I have read your resume. You have the, a professional expertise that's going to be incredibly helpful to this, to this challenge, and I appreciated that Director Matzek has offered a lot of opportunity for you to learn specifically more about variances and the role of the ZBA in Braintree, and I know that, you know, the enthusiasm that I've seen from you and the other appointees has been really impressive, and I know that a set of fresh eyes, while it is, it can feel like, you know, uncertain, is also a tremendous opportunity for Braintree. And so I, I'm grateful to you, and that's what I wanted to say, to you and to all of the other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan. I actually had a question for Mayor Joyce, if you don't mind, Mayor. I was in the memos, and this actually arose earlier this evening. There doesn't look like there's term limits on these appointees. Is that correct? Can you talk a little bit about that?
That is correct. We had had previous review of the charter, and that the charter, which I think Solicitor Rosetti could speak to if there's further question, but that these would be appointments at the will of the mayor without a term limit.
And is that the case for all of our boards and commissions? I know some of them we have had term limits on. If that's not a question for this evening, if we need to stick to ZBA, that's fine, but probably-
We can follow up with that. I think there was some confusion about that when we had first started, we had had KP take an extensive look at that, and then as, and they had provided an opinion which we can share to the council. This was around the time we were looking at some planning board appointments, but again, maybe it makes sense to follow up with the council on the specifics of that, but we had, per the charter, I think there's some state statutes that talk about term limits, but then the charter would overrule that, and the charter is open-ended on the appointments it's serving at the will of the mayor, so.
Thank you for that explanation. That's, that's all.
The councilors have any further questions or comments? Have you done? Sorry. Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
Yes, President Ryan. Upon the request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with Section 2-10 and 3-3 of the town charter, approve the appointment of Angela Kavanaugh to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular voting member.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 25032 Mayor Appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Reina Rubin, as a regular voting member or take up any action related there too. I'm going to refer to Councilor Baraka, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25032.
Thank you, President Ryan, echoing my earlier statement. The committee is sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Joyce?
Thank you, Council President Ryan. So this appointment is for another regular voting member, Ms. Reina Rubin. Reina is a senior-level planner and project manager, having spent time on both the private real estate industry side and also working for the state. Ms. Rubin has also served on our Master Plan Steering Committee, which several years ago I had the opportunity to serve alongside of her. She's incredibly diligent, hardworking, and has spent many, many hours serving on boards subject to the open meeting law, so I think a great familiarity for her. She's also currently serving on our Historic Commission and will be transitioning away from that commission to this role on the ZBA. So again, if you're interested in serving on the Historic Commission, please let the mayor's office know. I think at this time, I'd like to invite Reina up so she can introduce herself and answer any questions that the council might have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Welcome.
I'm very short. Thank you. So I've been a resident in Braintree for about 11 years, and as you heard, I'm on the Historical Commission. I served on the Master Plan Committee. I am an urban planner, and I work for the state with real estate, their surplus real estate mostly, and I'm very interested in using these skills, you know, and my commitment to the Braintree community to, to further, you know, enhance the quality of life here.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions, comments? Council Flaherty?
Thank you. Again, thank you for stepping up to this role. I, I'm grateful to you for doing the hard work and making that commitment. I know that you, you know, served on the Master Plan Steering Committee, which was a long process, that where we learned a lot about what our community wants, and I'm curious, now that you're, you know, ready to launch into this new role, how do you see the Master Plan as informing the judgment calls that you need to make for, on the ZBA?
Well, I think the Master Plan Committee, you know, it's aspirational. A lot of it is where we see our, the future of our community in different areas, subject areas, so, you know, I think that looks more to the future. I think, you know, most of the decisions will probably be more technical and, you know, bylaws and homeowners and that sort of thing, but, but then I think it also speaks to, you know, where we want to be, you know, in the short and long-term future, you know, more vision, more stability, you know, and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, that kind of a guiding document, and actually, there's probably other guiding documents too that would be helpful. We were talking about earlier, some of the other resources that will help, I think, us make-
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, is this not?
You gotta talk into the mic and speak up a little bit, please.
Okay, sorry. How's that?
Awesome.
Should I start over? Well, the Master Plan Committee, document, is more aspirational and looking to the future in different subject areas, so I think, you know, it says, it's like the larger context for a lot of decisions. A lot of projects that will come to us will just be smaller, technical, technical things like homeowners, you know, wanting to improve their properties, but I think, you know, it's a good guide. There are other guides too, but, you know, there's a lot of work put into that, and there was a lot of, you know, we gathered a lot of different views, so I think it's valuable in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors have any questions, comments? Council Reynolds?
Thank you.
Mr. President, and good evening, Ms. Rain, Ms. Rubin. I've had the opportunity to work with you in the past on a few different initiatives in the town, one being the Master Plan as well. I have found you to be a very balanced, even-handed individual who has demonstrated a great amount of discernment and a great ability to assess situations and not rush to judgment. That being said, one of the things that we spoke about in the Ways and Means Committee meetings over the last two evenings, we talked about property owners' rights and protections to abutters for individual projects, as well as community impacts, and that, that need to be able to balance, and again, use the term here, discern, you know, the, the, what is the right of a property owner versus what are the protection, the rights to protections of abutters? Could you just expand a little bit on your thought on that?
Well, I think every project, you know, you have to look at, you know, what, what is the relief they're seeking, and what is the hardship, and, and that sort of thing, and then, you know, have they considered the impact on the abutters, you know, physical impacts, and, you know, does it fit in with the quality of the neighborhood? Is it, is it reasonable? Is it, will it stand the test of time? So I think, you know, those are the things to consider, and, you know, I think a lot of times, projects are infill, so people get used to, you know, what's there, but, you know, you want to knit the neighborhood together, and that involves the abutters as well as the project itself. You know, and are the abutters being treated respectfully? I think that's, that's something too that, you know, I consider when the developer comes in and they, and they present their thoughts and their designs and their, you know, what they want us to consider, in addition to the, you know, the compliance with the bylaws and what we, our findings that we need to make.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Council Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you, Ms. Rubin, for your service and your willingness to serve in this new role, and I think it's, your professional background as a planner, your familiarity with state laws, your familiarity with Braintree, and all the, the service you've already provided for the community will serve us very well on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm certainly very happy to support your appointment this evening. I think as we go through, this is for folks at home and for the council members who aren't members of the Ways and Means Committee, it's important to know that during our two evenings of here, or questioning of these members, we spoke a lot and asked a lot of questions about the role of community feedback, and I would say, and I'll look to my fellow committee members for any additional color they might want to add, but what we continued, continually heard from all of the candidates was the importance of evaluating thoughtfully, as you said, Ms. Rubin, the, the community feedback, weighing the, the legal rights of abutters and the legal rights of applicants, and really taking both a big picture and a small-details approach to the process, and we heard this in different ways from all of the candidates over the course of the last two evenings. So I wanted to bring that to light, because I think it's important. A lot of deliberation happens in the committee meetings, and it doesn't always come out during the full council, and I know my colleagues on the committee will have things to add later on, but again, very happy to support your appointment tonight, and truly thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other councilors have any comments, questions, remarks? Okay, I just want to say, good luck. Again, you have big shoes to fill. It's a whole new committee. I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for your, thank you for serving. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. A motion, upon the request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with Section 2-10 and 3-3 of the town charter, approve the appointment of Reina Rubin to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular voting member.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations. Best of luck. Next item on the agenda is 25033 Mayor Appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Jose Perez, as a regular voting member or take up any action related there too. I'm going to refer to Council Baraka, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25033.
Thank you, President Ryan. Again, the committee is sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Joyce?
Thank you, Council President Ryan. The third item on our agenda for appointment to the ZBA is for our third regular voting member, Mr. Jose Perez. Mr. Perez comes to the board with a background in real estate, and he is a small-business owner, and is, he is also notably bilingual and speaks fluently both English and Spanish, which may be a resource to residents in the future that might come before the ZBA, but at this time, I'd like to invite Jose up to introduce himself and to answer any questions that the council might have.
Sure.
Thank you.
How you guys doing? I'm Jose E. Perez. I've been a resident of Braintree for over 20 years. I've also been in real estate over 20 years, selling high-end real estate, where I've developed an understanding of how zoning could affect property values, community character. developed an understanding of how zoning could affect property values, community character, and responsible growth. And that's one of the things that I'm hoping to bring to the zoning, to the ZBA.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the council? Council Barica?
Yep, thank you again, and Mr. Perez, thank you for your willingness to serve. Again, to provide a little additional information and color, I was very impressed, not only with your professional background, but your commitment to the community and the position. Last night, one of your children was in tow, and that demonstrated to me your, the seriousness with which you're taking this job, as I know everybody else is, but I wanted to commend you for that and, and offer my appreciation.
Thank you, thank you.
Because I know it is not always easy to balance multiple responsibilities and wear multiple hats at the same time. So again, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Council Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome, Mr. Perez. The last two evenings, we, as previous speakers have mentioned, we've had a very good opportunity and extensive period of time in being able to question you, as well as the other members, other candidates this evening. Having been a member of the Braintree Planning Board for 13 years myself, although the Planning Board is on a larger scale and more expansive in its review of applications, the ZBA plays a very important role, very important role. As we repurpose particular sites, we talk a lot about the zoning and the various zoning and the various, how rules apply for setbacks, for density, for types of use, et cetera. And one of the things that you had talked about, that you really emphasized in this conversation was, is that there has to be a balance that has to be struck, and that the character of the neighborhood, excuse me, of the community, as you've just mentioned in your opening remarks, is a really important guiding principle for a member of the ZBA. You also talked a little, we, we talked about the evolution of zoning, the zoning act itself, where communities weren't, didn't have that standard years and years ago. So in the nineteen, in 1948, in the town of Braintree, they adopted the first zoning act and with it zoning laws. And so one of the interesting things that, that you were talking with me about in those conversations was the pre-existing non-conforming aspect, as one of the various things that you as a planning, or excuse me, as a ZBA member, would have to take into consideration. So what is your level of comfort operating as a newly appointed, if you receive your confirmation this evening from the council, along with those subject matter experts that would be available to you, such as the planning director, the zoning administrator, the town solicitor? What kind of level of comfort does that bring you and how do you think that you can bring your effectiveness?
Well, I think over the last two nights, I've heard a lot of positive things, that there's a lot of support that I'll have around me. There's a lot of learning, which I'm willing to, you know, to take the time and learn anything that I need to do before decisions are made. So I think the resources that are around me are valuable, and they'll definitely will be beneficial for my growth. But at the end, my, my goal here is to help that every decision that I make or help support the integrity of our neighborhood and the fair opportunity that exists in having responsible growth for the Braintree community going forward.
I like that phrase, responsible growth. We do need growth as, as every community requires growth year over year. Expenses go up every year. Operating expenses go up every year. In our own households, we see up, we see expenses go up every year. And we need to make, we need to work within our, our revenues. And the, and the town of Braintree is no different. So it's refreshing, or I shouldn't say it's refreshing, but it's, it's, I'm confident in hearing you cite that as a guiding principle on this board.
Correct.
Right, so thank you, I appreciate that. And I, I have confidence then, that you will, you will be, you'll be an even-handed individual. You've proven to me in these conversations that we have, you've gone about and made yourself into a real estate expert. You've built your own company. You've shown a skill of understanding community value.
Correct.
From a residential standpoint. And I, and, and I never did ask you the question if you had any real estate experiences, non-residential sales or development.
I, I mean, real estate, I can practice a little bit of everything, but my main bread and butter has always been residential, even though I have a little bit of commercial.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councils have any comments, questions? Council Flaherty?
Thank you. So I, I know that we covered a lot of territory in the committee meetings that we have already been through, but what I think that you can bring to the table is, is a clear understanding of the, the economy of real estate. And one of the primary concerns that people have, you know, a ZBA decision always renders an influence on a new build and, or an addition. And I think that what you bring to the table is a really keen understanding of how something new impacts everything around it in terms of its value, which is a fair and valid concern that residents have when they're confronted with some sort of potential change. So I'm, I'm grateful to you for coming to us with that expertise and just, again, like so many others, I want to thank you for your contribution to Braintree because it means a lot to have someone willing to give up their nights when they have little kids and other demands on their time. It's, it's, it's really impactful, and I thank you for it.
You're welcome. Thanks for the nice words.
Any other councils have any questions, comments? Mr. Perez, I just want to say thank you for stepping up to serve, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? If we hear none, I'll entertain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Upon the request of her honor Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with section two dash ten and three dash three of the town charter, approve the appointment of Jose Perez to the zoning Board of Appeals as a regular voting member.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. What I'm gonna do after we vote on this next motion is I'm gonna give people, councils a chance, if they want to talk about the whole process and everybody, instead of having to talk when one person's up there. So I'm gonna let people talk after we have the last motion will go around, okay? So having said that, I'm sorry, the next item is two, five, zero, three, four, mayor appointment to the zoning Board of Appeals, Richard Thomas Kleber, as an associate member, take up any action related there, too. I'm going to refer to Councilwoman Barica, chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means for our recommendation on order two, five, zero, three, four.
Thank you, President Ryan. Again, the committee is sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Joyce?
Good evening, Council President Ryan. The next appointment is for one of two associate member roles. So just for the council's benefit, we are appointing, looking to appoint four members, that there will still be one open associate member that we have not selected yet. So again, an opportunity for anyone who's watching this and wants to serve to reach out. We haven't filled that spot, but the appointment of these four members allows us to have a quorum and be able to hold, hold a meeting. We do have applications pending, and we do have to hold a public meeting within a, a timeframe or be at risk of constructive approvals, which is not a, not a place we want to be. So Tom is here this evening, is Braintree, he, he's a people person, actually. His background's in human resources. I think a really great background to bring to public service on a board like this. A lot of what transpires in a meeting is listening to residents, working with your board, working with members of town that are, are helping to facilitate conversation around projects. I'm gonna invite Tom up to introduce himself and answer questions of the council, but Tom has a very strong background in working with people, and I think we're very lucky to have him able to serve in this position for our community. So come on up.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. So my name's Tom Kleber. I've been a Braintree resident since 2018. It's a real privilege to be here tonight and to have the opportunity to speak with all of you about my appointment to the zoning Board of Appeals. I just want to start with sharing what drew me to this role. So first and foremost, I care deeply about the future of Braintree. It's a community that I'm, I'm proud to call home, and like many residents, I value the character of our neighborhoods, the sense of identity, history and connection that makes Braintree more than just a place to live. But at the same time, I recognize the importance of thoughtful growth and responsible investment. So Braintree, like many communities in the region, is facing the challenge of adapting to new economic and housing realities. We want to encourage development that supports our local economy, provides opportunities for residents, and development that supports and helps maintain our long-term financial health. But I also understand we need to be deliberate in how and where we grow, mindful of infrastructure and environmental impact, and respectful of what makes each part of town unique. As Mayor Joyce mentioned, professionally, I, I work as a senior leader in human resources, where I'm responsible for navigating complex and oftentimes sensitive issues. My role requires clear judgment, strong ethics, and the ability to remain unbiased while weighing different priorities and perspectives. I've spent my career helping organizations make decisions that align with their long-term goals while addressing the needs and concerns of individuals, and I see a lot of parallels with the work of the zoning Board of Appeals. So with that, I, I thank you again for your time today, and I look forward to contributing to the important work ahead.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, remarks from the council? Council Barica?
Thank you, President Ryan. Did you want us to hold our remarks till the end, or would you like me to-
Just on, just on-
Okay, yes, I'm, well, then I'm happy to let the full council know and all the residents at home. Mr. Kleber brings, as the mayor said, a strong change management, I think, is how we discussed it upstairs and how you described it, and I've been incredibly impressed with your, your knowledge so quickly on Braintree zoning bylaws. And I, I, although you're being appointed as an associate member, I can already see the value you're gonna bring and the questions you're gonna ask, the manner in which you listen and the thoughtfulness with which you deliberate. So I am very happy to support your nomination this evening and look forward to many good things ahead. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome, Mr. Kleber. We've had a very, as Council Barica just alluded to, we, we had very extensive conversations. And just over two evenings, the things that you were, came back with this evening after our conversations from last night gives me a great level of confidence that you are going to be a person who's very diligent. You're gonna get the facts. You want to see the bigger picture, but you've also seemed to me that you've demonstrated the ability to identify individual aspects of a, of a particular argument or a contributing factor to a situation. That could make a big difference on whether this decision, a particular decision, is the right decision to make, okay? And with that, you also made a comment this evening, which, that I was very happy to hear too, is that we need to, we need to grow responsibly. That doesn't mean we go for a big rush. It means that we, we've, we identify something that is right for its particular area and all of the mitigating factors that, that contribute to whether or not a particular application or a request before the ZBA is good for the, the community, the abutters, and accommodates the, the property owner's rights, okay? So there's always going to be asks. Sometimes we have to say no. We can't please everybody, and you were quick to recognize that, that not, you can't please everybody. Could you just tell, talk us through a little bit? There's two things that I want to hear a bit more from you this evening. One is your point of view in listening to neighbors and stakeholders, as well as precedences that decisions may make.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I bring to this from a strong belief in the value of dialogue, right? It's important that we're able to hear from everybody who's gonna be influenced by the decisions that we've made, or decisions that we will be making, and we're able to make a, a fair and informed decision that may not necessarily please everybody, but with a level of transparency where everybody feels heard and they have an understanding of why the decision that was made, what some of the trade-offs are, you know, and ultimately, you know, ensuring that people understand that, you know, they've been heard in the process. Your, I'm sorry, the second part of your question's around stakeholders, but it-
Right, so your ability, the, the importance of identifying stakeholders, and that the stakeholders are also heard.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And so that's where, you know, we don't need to rush to a decision, right, through the, through the appeals process. If we need more information, we have the right to ask for more information. We have the right for applicants to come forward and tell them you need to go back, make sure that you've spoken with the abutters, have your abutters agreed to this? Are there additional studies that may be necessary as we evaluate things like parking, as we evaluate things like traffic or environmental impact? So we want to make sure that we have all of the information that we need to make an informed decision, but not so much that we're creating a significant level of bureaucracy that makes it difficult for, for projects to move forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council Flaherty?
So as I read your, your resume and I saw, okay, HR, and I thought about that and what an HR professional could bring to the table in the ZBA. In, in our conversations during committee, what struck me is that you have the skills to be able to produce meaningful dialogue between interested parties, which is incredibly challenging to do around these fraught issues concerning zoning. And so I'm grateful to you for being able to bring that to this, to our community, because we need to have better conversations, and I think that you're gonna be able to help facilitate that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Want to wish you the best of luck. Please try to help the residents and the homeowners in the town of Braintree the best you can. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Upon the request of her honor Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with section two dash ten and three dash three of the town charter, approve the appointment of Richard Thomas Kleber to the zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations. Okay, so just want to give councils a chance to talk about this for one second. I usually wait till the end to talk, but I'm gonna take a little liberty here and talk first, and I want to say something very brief. I want to thank the former members of the zoning Board of Appeals for their service to the town of Braintree. Steve Carl, Mike Ford, Richie McDonough, Tim Burke, Gary Sullivan, I think if you add, Gary Walker, oh, Jesus, sorry, Gary Walker, sorry, Gary. If you add up all of their years of service, I think you're about 100 years of service almost to the town, and it's, it's tremendous. And I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge them and to thank them. So thank you. And now I'd open it up for any other council. Council Magliano, you said you wanted to wait till the end.
Thank you very much, Council President Ryan. So that's a really nice launching point for me, because I think that when a board that is so important, all of a sudden, all of the members resign, the, there's some concern about the function of the board. What does this mean? How are things going to work? And so one of the things I wanted to do was, was open up the transparency a little bit around the, the functions of the zoning Board of Appeal, and also celebrate the fact that we have four talented people willing to step up so quickly, so soon, and go through a vetting process where they are being asked questions in group formats, in multiple meetings, night after night, and where there's a lot of attention on them. So the fact that we have a licensed professional architect with lists of certifications and demonstrated projects, we've got an experienced senior planner with zoning experience, permitting experience at pretty high state levels, we've got a business leader who's a real estate professional who started his own businesses, who has, who also is bilingual, which I think is really great, because that's just such an, it's such a welcoming aspect for people coming into a board. And also for, we have a corporate leader who's managed $70 million budgets and led strategic planning pro- and led strategic planning processes. So these are people with credentials, these are people with experience, these are seasoned folks, and they're willing to put a lot of time in to an effort that is pretty important to the town. Now, what are they going to be doing? This is where I think it's important for people to get a sense of the scope of what happens at the Zoning Board of Appeal, and essentially zoning is to, and to have these guidelines, it's around promoting the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the town's inhabitants, that's all of us, to lessen the congestion in the streets, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage systems, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, to conserve the value of lands and buildings, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, and to conserve natural resources, prevent blight, pollution of the environment, and to preserve and increase its amenities. So when something is coming before this board, those are all the kinds of considerations that go into it, in addition to the very specific project that is before it, the impact on the community, the impact on the abutters, and the overall flow and quality of life in the neighborhood. And so looking at the guidelines and then looking at someone's potential project and offering a panel approach to working through that process to decide, will there be relief on this project or not? It's something that can be highly technical, it's something that could be emotional, it's something that could have long-lasting impacts, and when I look at these four professionals, I think we are extremely lucky to have you so ready to step up and fulfill this role and to lend your guidance to this process. And I want to thank you, and I wish you all the very best success at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Erica?
Councilwoman Warren.
Did you want to go?
Councilwoman Warren.
That's all right.
No, I'm good for now.
All right, Councilwoman Warren. Everybody's running the meeting except me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I joined with Councilor Hume at the meeting at which same-night action was requested and opposing same-night action, because I was not aware of the qualifications and of the applicants for this position. I want to join the president in thanking the former members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for their decades of service to the town. They are people, several of them I have known for decades, including Chairman Steve Carl. I consider them friends, and I know that they work diligently in the best interest of the town. I think these appointments, these appointees deserve the same, deserve a shot, to be given a shot to do their job without being in the shadow of the people that they are replacing. I think we have a range of expertise that is going to serve the town well, when you have a Realtor, an architect, and a planner who is not only a planner, but has served on the master plan committees of two different communities and on a conservation commission, and an individual with skills in implementing strategic initiatives. It's apparent from this array of skills and the diversity of backgrounds that there was no litmus test or predisposition for any of these appointees. They are open-minded, they have demonstrated their earnestness, they're willing to work in the best interest of the town, they have repeatedly expressed their concern for their neighbors, their community, and the preservation of the quality of life that we have in this town. What they have most in common is they're, as you could tell tonight, they're pretty soft-spoken, but they're very good listeners, and I think, and they want to do this job well. Each of them want to do this job well. I look at this, at the Zoning Board of Appeals through the lens of an attorney. That's what I, that's how I look at things. They have the job of enforcing the zoning laws, the statutes of the Commonwealth, which grant relief in specific reasons, where there's a need for relief due to shape of a lot, soil conditions, or topography, and that without that relief, undue hardship would befall the owner of the property. I am confident that they are going to apply the law to the best of their ability and comply with the law in all their decisions that they issue. I do not expect to agree with every decision that they make, but they have earned from me the benefit of doubt that they will act in the best interest of the town. I think it was unfortunate that we were in a position that we had to replace a number of people at the same time. But I applaud the mayor for offering the council for its consideration independent and fair-minded individuals who just want to do a good job for the town. They are entering into probably the most contentious forum in town government. Zoning boards of appeals are by their very essence heated and contentious, but they're willing to step up and do work that many others aren't, and I applaud them for their willingness to do that and their willingness to volunteer to help our town continue to be a good place to live, that takes, that tries to strike a fair balance between developers and residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warren. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Flaherty?
So I don't think I can say it better than Councilwoman Warren, but what I will say is that the former ZBA members left a legacy of decisions that this new board can and should look to going forward as they make decisions governing new applications. I'm grateful for the many decades of service, and I know that those decisions have a long track record that can be, that we can persevere with. I think that the roster that we have with an architect who understands the technical building details, a planner who has zoning experience and master plan knowledge, a real estate, a real estate person who has economic considerations in mind, and an HR representative who can facilitate meaningful dialogue around a really difficult set of circumstances, is a way, is a good formula for lively conversation and meaningful discussion of whatever the issue is at hand. In the committee meetings, we had, we had a lot of questions about perspective and, you know, how do you evaluate the staff report and the zoning bylaws, and much, much more technical questions were answered, and I was deeply impressed, not just by the earnestness with which the questions were answered, but also by the depth of experience or knowledge that was demonstrated among four people who have only just now stepped up to do this really heavy lift. It is a lot to learn quickly, and the resources are being made available to them, and, but you can make resources available to someone, but they have to be willing to, like, do the reading and do the homework, and I have a lot of confidence that these four people have already done a lot of the homework, and they're going to continue to do that work. So I have no reservations about the quality of the decisions that will be made going forward, because I know that all of these individuals have the best interest of Braintree in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Erica? Are you going to not talk? Do you have something?
I will, all right, I will go. That's fine. Thank you, President Ryan. Again, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and as I stated upstairs, I won't belabor the point, because I mentioned it in each of these, but it's not easy to serve at a time when there are contentious issues, and other than one's children, I can't think of anything that is more meaningful to people than their homes and their businesses. And I hope that we will all remember that, not only are our board and commission members volunteers, but they're also residents and friends and neighbors, and it means a lot to me personally, it means a lot to me as a counselor and as a resident to have anyone step up and be willing to serve, and I appreciate Mayor Joyce for putting such an exceptional set of candidates before us, and I would like also to offer my thanks to the prior zoning board, who had decades of experience and certainly paved the way for all of us who are currently serving in local government. So thank you again to all of you, and thank you, President Ryan.
Thank you, Councilmember Erica. Councilman Reynolds?
Mr. President, I'll make this brief. What's been said already by my fellow counselors in terms of the quality of the folks who have applied, who have accepted appointments, and their motivations, and really to thank those former members of the ZBA for the years of experience and sound decision-making. I didn't agree with every decision, but I respected the way they went about it. And I wanted to share what I think the most important aspects of this past board and that what this new board will guide them in their roles as new members of the ZBA. Their diligence of assessments, I think that they have proven that to us, that they have a great potential for that, to serve this community. Those assessment exercises are absolutely critical as a baseline to make good decisions. Your ability to listen, that has been called out this evening as well, is what struck some of our members of the Ways and Means Committee, their ability to listen. The balanced perspective, which I think is the most important. We have a balance of trying to run a community, pay for that community, but to maintain a quality of life, and the quality of life is absolutely critical for us. It's why we came to Braintree, that's why we choose to stay here in Braintree. The neighborhoods, the protections of our neighborhood play a big part of that. They can be individual properties, individual homes, or larger properties, or even larger projects, that really have to be broken down, and the discernment has to be great on that, on what is the benefit and what is the drawback. Change will always happen. These people have always been driven by the love of community, and that was obvious in the performance of our last board, and it's obvious in the people that we have interviewed this evening and have approved for their new positions. And I think the willingness to contribute really to the well-being of our community says a lot about the character of the people that we have approved this evening. It also said a lot about the character of those who served prior to this board. I would ask very, I ask that the planning director, the zoning administrator, the town solicitor, the mayor, offer just always an open door of just constant guidance and ability to answer questions, and that the board, every member of this board this evening, of this new board, have all said that that is what they will hope, and that is what they are not going to be afraid of asking questions. And, you know, it's just, you have a lot to learn, but everybody starts. I remember as a planning board member, my very first meeting after I was elected, it seems like years and years ago, back when under the old former government, your ability to listen to others and watch, to ask the questions, and that you're not mailing it in on any evening. Sometimes it's going to be difficult for you, after a long day, to now go and listen to a long and complicated process or a project. I ask you, just continue to just give it all you've got, and I have a great amount of confidence that you all will succeed, and this town will succeed. Thank you.
Any other councilors' comments? Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is 25040, Councilwoman Warren, reclassification clerk of the council or take up any action related to, and I refer to Councilwoman Warren, chair of the Committee on Personnel Issues for a recommendation on 25040.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Personnel Issues met and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order 25040.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions, comments? Okay, I just want, sure.
I think that this is a well-deserved reclassification for Clerk Samino. Clerk Samino has demonstrated a, you want to talk about somebody who is dedicated to her community. She's selfless, she puts so many hours in, and she does it all on her own. So I thank you, Clerk Samino, and I want to thank the Personnel Board for recognizing that and making an excellent recommendation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warren?
Just to provide background on this order, presently, the clerk of the council is the lowest-grade classified position on the non-BPMA, non-union list. However, the job duties of the clerk of the council and essential functions compare very closely to the assistant town clerk, which is classified two grades higher. This reclassification, coupled with increased oversight and schedule adjustments, will allow for the elimination of accumulation of compensatory time, which has been proved to be a necessity in the past. So I think this adjusts, this adjustment addresses two issues through one order, and I would, I would hope that the council joins in adopting it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warren. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? I just want to say that as the president of the town council, I've been the president of the town council a few times now, you get to work very closely with the clerk of the council, and Sue does an outstanding job. She is an advocate for every, all nine of us, she's our assistant for all nine of us, she's, she holds our hand and walks us through the process sometimes, and we rely on her heavily. She does a wonderful job. Doing a wonderful job doesn't mean you get reclassified, though, but when we looked at her job duties, which I want to thank the Personnel Committee, looked very closely, and we realized that this is a very appropriate reclassification and puts her more in line with what her actual job, what she actually does, and looking at it from like a desk audit perspective, and I think it's a little overdue, and as Councilwoman Warren mentioned, we'll take care of a few issues at once here. I think it's, it's a very appropriate thing, and I want to thank the Personnel Committee, and I want to thank Peter Warren for being the chairperson of the Personnel Committee and handling this, and I'm going to fully support this. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, hearing that, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Upon the request of the council president and pursuant to Section 2-8 Subsection C and 2-8 Subsection D of the Town Charter, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, approve the reclassification of the clerk of the council. The reclassified grade will be M12E to take effect on July 1, 2025.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Do we have a motion to refer all remaining items under new business to the respective committees?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. We are going to be going into executive session. Before we do that, I just want to make a few announcements. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, July 8, at 7:30, and we're going to be going to one meeting a month for July and August, August 5. to one meeting a month for July and August, August 5th, so we'll be having only two meetings in the next two months. I want to thank Bell, B-CAM for advertising, for showing the council meeting tonight, and I'm going to read this motion regarding, I'm going to read this regarding the executive session 02725. I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, in order to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law or federal grant in aid requirements. So I'd ask that, Council Berica, read the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The Braintree Town Council will vote on entering into executive session with the town solicitor in accordance with Exemption 7 Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 7, in order to comply or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, and in this instance, under the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 22, to review and approve the minutes of the town council's executive session of April 29th, 2025, and to determine whether those minutes warrant nondisclosure to the public. When the executive session concludes, the town council will adjourn and will not reconvene in public session.
We have a motion in a second, and we're going to have a roll call vote for this.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council Warren?
Aye.
Council Quilty?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye. So that's unanimous, and now what I need is a motion for a 10-minute recess to go upstairs to the Johnson Chambers and get situated. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council Warren?
Aye.
Council Quilty?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye. That was unanimous, so we're going to reconvene up in Johnson Chambers for executive session.